...meeting, um, we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start the agenda off with the oath of office for our appropriate boards. Christine.
Eddie first. Do raise your hand and repeat after me please. I, Eddie Soreza.
I, Eddie Soreza.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the state of New York.
The state of New York.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning board member.
Of planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And next is Rick. Okay, Rick, raise your hand.
You know. That's his first rodeo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
I will support the constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of zoning board of appeals member.
Of zoning board of appeals member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Nancy Coverford. Ready?
Sure.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Nancy Coverford.
I, Nancy Coverford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning board member.
Of planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. So, how many more? So, what we'll do is we'll continue on. At this point, we had scheduled a public hearing, the local law regarding prohibiting smoking on village-owned property. Have a motion to open a public hearing.
Have a motion.
A second. A second. Any questions right there? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, so you have some of the material in front of you. It was up on the side here. So, in essence, we're basically updating the law to prohibit any type of tobacco, vaping, um...
Cannibalism.
Cannibalism. Any of that good stuff. Everybody's paying attention pretty good. So that, to, you know, to basically remove all of that from our park area, so Memorial, all the children's parks, et cetera. So, signs will be going up. If there's any specific questions, we'd like to entertain any questions that anybody might have.
Well, it also expands to village-owned properties, so parking lots.
Right.
That are owned by the village outside here. Any particular piece of property that is village-owned that the taxpayers pay for, no smoking, don't want to be seeing it.
So, and this will give, obviously, our police department leverage if they see something, you know, and it's worth their attention, someone calls, that, you know, some appropriate actions will be taken, maybe warnings, but at least now we have it on the books and we're covered for that type of situation. Any questions for anybody? Any kind of motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Sorry. Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And now we'll do the resolution to accept the new local law. So, a meeting of the village board of the village of Washingtonville, New York, was conveyed on June 5th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. The following resolution was duly offered and seconded to wit, resolution adopting local law number four of 2023 prohibiting smoking on village-owned property. Whereas the village board of the village of Washingtonville, from time to time review its laws, rules, and regulations to certain, the same are consistent with all current local practices as well as best practices to protect the health, safety, and welfare of village residents. And whereas the village board desires to adopt a local law entitled Local Law Prohibiting Smoking on Village-Owned Property, whereas an introductory local law was introduced before the village board on June 5th, 2023. And whereas, upon duly published and posted, a public hearing was held on said local law on June 5th, 2023. Herein, public discussion was heard concerning its merits of said local law. And after hearing all those present wishing to speak and acknowledging that no written comments had been received, the village board declares the public hearing closed. Now therefore dissolved by the village board as follows. Section one, whereas paragraph, are incorporated herein by reference, thought set through in full. Section two, the village board hereby adopts a local law, Local Law Number Four of 2023 prohibiting smoking on village-owned property and attached here to as Schedule A. The village clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law into the mass of this meeting, end in local law book for the village of Washingtonville, and give due notice for the adoption of said local law by filing a local law in the office of the Secretary of State in the state of New York. Section four, this resolution shall become effective immediately. And the question of adoption, foregoing resolution, was duly put to a vote on a roll call, which results as, everyone in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, any questions? Or, I'm sorry, wait for a second. Have a second on the motion, please.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Christine, I'll give you my copy, Chris.
Yes.
So, we can handle that tomorrow.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this point, we're at the public comment portion of our meeting. If anyone has any comments, questions, concerns, we're here for you. Hi.
Eddie Johnson, I just have a question about, is Washingtonville opted out of cannabis sales?
Yes.
Because there are gummies, Albert Sunoco, I don't know if that falls in the, they are out of reach.
A plus? A plus, you said?
No, Sunoco.
Sunoco, A plus.
That is A plus.
Yeah, okay, A plus, got it. Um, yeah, we'll have to bring it to the chief's attention. Thank you. Chris did another. Thank you. Good. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is basically discussion. Last Wednesday, we had another financial status update from our treasurer, Leslie. There's copies over there if anyone is interested in them. And the information will be posted online shortly to our website and Facebook. And it basically outlined the reason we were creating the Home Rule Act and looking to borrow up to four and a half million dollars to basically cover outstanding debt and issues with the current budget and to cover expenses that were paid in the neighborhood of one point, you know, one point six to one point eight million dollars that was paid out from the previous administration within the window of two weeks between the election and us taking office. So that had obviously created a huge gap in our budget, and so we needed to take the appropriate action, and it needed to be done, unfortunately, in a quick manner, really, I think, within less than two weeks, having conversation with the Assemblyman in Senate, them putting the bill together, bringing it to the floor, bringing it back to us to let them know that it was, at that point, our call accepted. Then we had to get final language from our attorney, the final rule. All of that information was put together on Tuesday, right after Labor Day, and Wednesday we had the special meeting. And where, again, this was posted and it was also presented by our treasurer outlining, you know, our deficiencies and so forth. So, again, this will be posted online. We are supposed to be hearing the status of the borrowing by Thursday of this week, and when we do, we'll definitely be posting, you know, on our website as well as Facebook, the outcome.
Okay. So there is some good news to this. Since the water and sewer funds are staying in, the water and sewer funds are not being used for aid funds, I have a good chance that we could be solvent in that by the end of this year.
That's good.
Because I've been writing everybody to get meters corrected.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, one of the big issues was our water and sewer fund, and Susan has adopted the water and sewer billing system. And I mean, from billing to sitting almost every hour of every day she's in here, we've become more staff than sometimes a board. But we needed that to be done in order to get this situation repaired. There were tons and just tons of issues with readers, a variety of different reasons. But Susan, again, adopting the system, we've got a work order system in place now, we're working with DPW, we're working with the highway department, work orders are being generated on just about everything that we can find. Chris Martino, from our head of our DPW, has been working with Susan, and they're going through these basic books, one book at a time, which covers certain areas of the village. And they're tackling it one card at a time, and if we see numbers that don't appear to be accurate, cards that don't have any information on it, cards that are showing numbers going in reverse, it is just unbelievable at the end of the day, what, how the funds were left and how, you know, what's the word I'm looking for here? But the system just wasn't utilized properly at all. So, we're on the road to recovery, and she's doing a great job. Money is finally coming out into the accounts, and people are obviously stepping up, giving us the documentation that they need, and the problems are being resolved. So, the best part is the residents are, I think, happier that they've been responded to and their bills are being taken care of. So, thank you.
Well, they may not like me so much, you know, everybody's quick to call if it's high, and you should call if it's high, you know, that means something's wrong. But on the other hand, there's got to be a couple hundred who are too low.
Yeah.
So they may not like me so much when they get a correct bill.
Yeah, it's...
But it will be a correct bill.
But that's just it. The equipment will be working, and we'll be able to prove that, yeah, this is what you really use.
Right. And the other side of this, we are, we'll be interviewing shortly, you know, physicians for the water and also a deputy mayor position as well. And we do have our part-time treasurer now, which she is doing a fabulous job, can't thank her enough for everything that she's doing. And again, on a monthly basis, there'll be more information to come on this particular little PowerPoint that we're just going to continue to add on and bring more information to the table. Just for an outside example, in our sewer plant, we've, we mentioned this one time before, but I confirmed it today, I was on the phone with our borrowing agency of EFC. Now, during the project, they were supposed to take our existing generator and move it into its permanent location and be used. Someone made a call to say that generator wasn't large enough to handle the new, the new updated plant. Then it became known that that generator was large enough to do what it needed to do. But the biggest problem in the interim is that they went out and borrowed or paid and leased the generator for the sewer plant at approximately between five and five, five thousand and five thousand, five hundred dollars per month since, I think, 2016.
Sixty thousand dollars a year.
So, if you multiply that out, we could afford many generators. And the worst news that I found out today is that money could have been reimbursable during the process of the project. And because, because when you're in the middle of a project, you can do what they call short-term borrowing on bands. So you borrow some money, and then the whole premise behind that is that you're not doing your final financing. But in 2020, I believe the year was, they finally did the final financing to long term. Once that happens, it's like you close the deal on a mortgage and you're done. After three days, you can't go back and say, oh, by the way, you know, I would like to get this money. And basically, I was told today that can't happen. So those types of things will be, you know, on the PowerPoint as we roll forward and again, things pop up as much as it's bad news. However, the good news a little bit is that I was able to find out today that we will be covered for the move of that generator from its current location to its permanent location. So when we, after we go out and spend probably between twenty and forty, five thousand dollars of moving that system, that money will be reimbursed from EFC. So it's not going to be a complete, complete loss, but the amount of money we spent is a loss. It's terrible. So, any questions, comments? Okay. Susan, did you get a copy of the building inspector record?
I did.
Would you like to go over that?
I would love to go over that. It's in the back of my file. So, this will be changing to a bi-month report. So for right now, though, we did ask the building inspector that we can report back to the residents what's going on in the building department. In the month of May, there are fifty-one building permits issued. Lot of them this time of year is fencing, decks, pools, that kind of stuff. One violation was issued. Twelve municipal searches, that's typically when somebody's going to sell their house. The title company will ask for, you know, are there any violations or if they're doing a refinance. There were zero fire safety and property maintenance inspections. Total fees collected for municipal searches is twenty, two thousand one hundred. There were some new construction and permit fees had come in for what you put in to open up a permit, there is a fee involved in it. That brought in twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The building department is also in the process of contacting people who opened up permits the first six months of the year and trying to stay on top of them to make sure that they get closed out and they don't just hang out there and live their lives.
Yeah, because a building permit is basically active for one full year from the point of issuing. So if you were building a deck yourself or having a contractor do it as long as the plan was approved, right, you get your, your building permit, and then within the year, you have the opportunity to close it. If you need an extension, then you would call the building department and ask for an extension. If there's nothing said, then what happens is your permit would expire, and then what happens is it's almost like it didn't happen, it wasn't there, and you basically need to reapply for that application again. And then the worst part of it is you're paying another fee because it expired and now you need to re-up it. So we're trying to reach everybody and be more proactive with it so that when it comes time to sell your home or whatever you're planning on doing, your file's complete, anything that you were doing, you know, from the point of having a building permit issued, is a certificate of compliance, and everything is, is good and you're closed, and when that time comes, you're, you're set and you don't have to worry about anything. And you get a copy, and there's a copy in our file. So it's always important to keep that stuff in a safe place for, almost forever, because it's also a nice thing to do when, if you're selling, when a buyer's coming in, you can also hand them your paperwork and say, you know, this is everything that's been done.
Building codes change, building codes change. So if you started something five years ago and New York State said, we'll let everybody do a little bit different now, and you never closed out that permit, well, now you're subject to the new codes. So it may be costing you more in the long run than if you'd closed it out in the first way.
And a lot of residents don't realize that's your responsibility. It's not the contractor who's doing the work, and it's not the building inspector, it's not the village, it's the homeowner. I do it on a daily basis and my real job.
What is this?
My real, real job.
This is a real job. Everything else is fine. Any questions, comments on any of that? Yeah, that's the most important piece, it really, building codes change. So if you built it ten years ago, ten years forward, it changes, the building department can actually mandate you to update the, the deck or whatever you were building to match the code for today.
But it's not closed.
It's very important.
If it's not closed.
Yeah, if it's not closed. And, right, it's an open permit, so it's not closed. And again, you're going to have to pay for that permit ten years down the road, and then you're going to say, oh, the step design was this way, now today, you know, rather than using four inch screw, you had to use a six inch screw. So it's, you know...
Oh, yeah.
So everybody will check their stuff. They have their own rules.
Eddie, you know what, you can come in anytime and put in a request to see your building file and see, does it match what's on my house? If it doesn't, oops, I better, you know, maybe want to have this checked out.
And unfortunately, a lot of people go in their life after and you try to sell your house.
Yeah.
And then they're going through all kinds of...
It's a good situation if someone did something without a permit.
Uh-oh.
That's even worse.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
So generally, it'll come back and get you.
A hundred percent.
Especially, we're actually preparing a letter for basement construction, because a lot of people, it's in their basement, they don't think anybody potentially can find out. More times than not, they do find out.
Here's another thing, you can be told, you can be told that by a contractor who just wants to get, you know, that you don't need the permit, it's your responsibility, it's not theirs. So do your due diligence and call and find out if you need a permit for whatever type of work that has been done.
You just had to call a commercial property and tell them you need to take that out, because that does not qualify for a finished space.
Or maybe rip it down.
Or you have to put in another window, so...
Yeah, it's safer to do it, really is, in the long run. Anything else? Okay. Next, we just wanted to just mention that the fireworks are set for July 7th with a rain date of July 8th, and everything is a go. We've been in touch with the provider, the vendor. We will be having a meeting, I guess, with the chief and, and safety, fire department, ambulance corps, and so forth as far as safety issues and securing the site. So that will be coming. Just a, you know, on Memorial Day, just really like to thank everybody who is involved in it. You know, we were in the front, and I did, there was somebody by the VFW that took a really nice, long video of the, of the whole parade, and I actually sat and watched it, and it was, it was really, really neat, and it was a great picture because it was the VFW army vehicle coming down the street, there was a little kid sitting in a wagon, blonde hair with a flag, and in the background was the large flag being held up by, by the fire trucks. And it was, it just, was just a beautiful picture for that, that moment, you know, really, really nice stuff. But the organization of putting it together, that all the marchers, everybody that really stepped up, the two fire departments got together to raise the flag to allow Monellen and Company to put their latest, newest apparatus, our ladder, into the parade. And the VFW, you know, with the truck and them being the lead of the parade was really, they really, really appreciated it. You know, they were shrinking membership, but they really, the older guys really appreciated it. And it was one guy was actually teasing, but he was a paratrooper in Korea, and I told him I was trying to get an airplane flyover and give him a parachute. He was on the phone with me, he said, but my arthritis in my right knee is killing me, I can't do it anymore. I'm like, that's good. But, yeah, it was a lot, lot of fun. And, you know, I've just got to say a big thank you to everybody, T and M for supplying everything afterwards, Chris was down there all day. I mean, it's too many names to mention and everything that was going on. And hopefully our downtown shops, you know, it was, you know, could take advantage of some of that. And Siobhan and some folks with the beautification taking care of the planters, and I know everybody's busy, you know, watering them and keeping them pretty, and so the downtown, I thought, looked really, really nice. So, any comments from the board, anybody?
No. Next year I am driving, though.
Our next discussion is just regarding paving. Again, we have approximately four hundred and eight thousand dollars in our chip funding that will be coming from the state. So even in our situation financially, what happens with that money is it's sitting in those accounts, the money needs to be spent before you can get reimbursed. So what we're doing is we're going to take small bites, we have probably four or five roads that we're, need to work on. There was, for example, the first project we were looking at is Emerson Drive and Seacord. Some drainage work was done to that road to, I guess, the engineering folks that went out there, so we added new piping and all, some other things. Unfortunately, they didn't remove what was existing in there, and what's underground right now were metal piping from probably twenty and years or more. And unfortunately, those pipes are in really bad shape. So rather than pave it and, you know, have the opportunity of having a problem with that, we're going to take care of that inside locally with our DPW crew and with some assistance from highway, from the town, so we can, you know, save money versus spending it. And then when that's done, then we will take care of Seacord and Emerson, and once that's done, and we get reimbursed, and we're going to the next one, and we're going to do it in that manner because we just don't have four hundred thousand basically out there to spend in one shot, so...
I just want to say, if you see the guys, the DPW guys out there on the road, please go slow around them, they're working hard to make sure that our infrastructure is working correctly, and we want to do the underground work before we spend paving money, so come up some slack, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so just as I mentioned, Emerson and Seacord for drainage, the other roads that we're looking at, which I didn't mention, but I just throw it out there again, is Lincoln Drive. We have the same drainage issues over there, it's original piping underground, it's all metal. All that will need to be replaced before we pave. And then Avon Boulevard to Washington Boulevard, there's some minor work that's been done, will need to be done. Our DPW is already taking care of most of the major infrastructure issues on that respective road. So, those are our, our goals, and we're going to take it as far into the year as we can, because over the last few years, up to December, is usually still pretty good weather before the plants close, before Christmas.
It's still, you mean Mockingbird on that list?
Well, yeah, the other, and that would be the next one. We're doing some minor paving, which will be Mockingbird and Peacock, which is off Cardinal Drive. Again, our, our staff, along with the town staff, is going to be working on those extensions a little bit to, again, save us money, we can haul it ourselves and, and take care of it. The other area that's going to get paved is from the 208 side to the village parking lot that's between the wondromat and the dance studio. That area's in really bad shape, so we're going to be paving that somewhere in the neighborhood, well, probably towards the end of the month. Would that be right, Chris? After the 21st of June? Cool. It's your daddy's day. Any questions, comments? Okay. We do have one correspondent. We do have one correspondence from Nymer slash Marshall and Sterling's. One of the conversations I had when this, we, or they introduced the new updated insurance policy and so forth, we had a conversation about because of all the budgetary issues that things were going on and who's paying the bills and who's touching the money. We felt that it was important to increase the limit of insurance on the employees that do that. So God forbid there was ever an issue that we had, I think the number was under 100,000 per person. I felt that was really too low. So we just increased it to the, to the max, which is 500,000 per, per individual. That would be the mayor, the deputy mayor, the treasurer, the clerk, court clerk and secretary. Anybody has the ability to sign checks or handle the money, deposits, et cetera. Endorsement covers commercial crime coverage, commercial crime policies, employee theft, forgery policies, government crime, crime coverage, forms, government crime policies and government employee theft and forgery policies. So again, insurance and going through the things that we have been going through, I thought it was important to protect the village and, you know, go with this minor increase. The overall impact a year is 72.60. So I think that's a no-brainer at the end of the day. Any discussion?
We're good?
We're good.
Steve, you're good?
Yeah. Most of us are. So the next item, getting into dealing with our budget, we had mentioned at our last meetings that we were looking for a second firm to assist in the audit processes so that we could try to get this done faster because it is a slower process because everything is manual and trying to grab paper and deal with all of that. So at this point, we have reviewed several different companies. The one company that stood out most for us and seems to have great depth and experience in, in this type of audit situation is BST. So they had basically sent us a proposal and an email follow-up because we renegotiated the price from 25,000 a year or for that particular one budget to 15,000. So we'll be able to save some money on that. So in, I don't know if that's the right one. This one. One second. Yeah. Oops, sorry. So with that, I'd like to make the resolution to authorize BST and company CPA's MLP to audit our 2122 budget for the cost not to exceed 15,000 dollars. Have a second, please? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zeros. Great, thank you, yes. All right, next is Crown Castle. This is, we've got a resolution to replace our data internet through Crown Castle for the police department, department of public works and village hall in the amount of 1,092 dollars for a term of 60 months. This is state contract pricing. We've been experiencing issues with time clocks and different devices at times, peak times during the day where it's very, internet access is really slow. So, and we're doing this for another large reason, for the police department and cameras that we're looking to purchase for, not only for the police officers, but there was a need for cameras and so forth at our parks, specifically the memorial park. The flagpole was damaged. We've had seats damaged. So we're working on, the chief is working on that actively. We're trying to narrow down vendors for cameras and so we can get that set up in the memorial park. With that, we would need a higher bandwidth to take care of the data needs. So with that, if I can authorize a resolution to replace the data network through Crown Castle for the police department, public works and village hall in amount to 1,092 dollars for a term of 60 months.
That's per month charge.
That's per month charge, correct.
And I'll make that motion.
Second, Steve, thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
And so the public knows two of these parks also have well stations on them that we want to have cameras on because if they vandalize a well station, we all suffer.
Great, thank you.
See, if you get the proper cameras, you'll get, you'll get credits in the insurance area. You'll have to buy back that one.
Yes, great point. Thanks, Matt. Gavin.
Off topic about internet. I'll use Frontier as specific. Is there any plans to have them upgrade the village fiber-wise?
That's a good question. We need to follow up with them. They did talk about bringing in fiber a few years ago.
Yes, I know.
And where that went, I don't know. But we can certainly, we can, we'll follow up on that and get an answer for you. Yeah. I did, you know, we're, our agreements allow anybody to come in. But what I, what I see is that depending on where you are, no one wants to play in the same pond. So, you know, here you got Spectrum, you have some Frontier. Going in that direction, you have Horizon. Going south is.
Comcast.
Comcast. So, and no one, you know, no one wants to create that competition, which is kind of, well, you can understand why they're doing it. But it does hurt us because it doesn't really give us much of a choice. For me personally, I went to Dire TV for my TV and I picked up Spectrum to take care of my motor. But, because I was on other various ones and they just weren't working.
We're in an after effect of people working from home.
Yep.
And some of the options are absolutely horrific. You know, having spent my whole career in the industry itself, it's, I know where it went, I know where the money went. It's just when their contract is up, you know, they look for public access.
Yeah.
It's when we need to push hard.
Yeah, we'll get an answer for you. Thank you. Any other questions? Next. Was that a question? Okay. Next is a resolution to authorize Washington girls varsity swim and dive team to hold their car wash on Sunday, June 11th and Sunday, August 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the veterans park, of course, from the Orange County Bagel and Pharmacy. Can I have that in a motion, please? Can I have a second, please? Any questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Great. Next is a resolution to accept the resignations of planning board chairman Bob Bukowski, zoning board of appeals member Ryan Osborne, zoning board of appeals member Michelle Rivera, zoning board of appeals member Danny Lazo and planning board member Joanne Wiley and planning board member Tom Gilda. Have that in motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, everyone. I know you're kind of taking lead on it, so we need to coordinate our dates, right? And then we have to work on the terms for everyone that'll be coming in.
So I can reach out. I have that. I saved it. I pinned it.
Okay.
We're going to set up a meeting at some point for each of the boards so they can nominate an elected chairperson. We have four boards to do that with.
Great, cool. Excellent, thank you. Next is a resolution to authorize facility use permit to the Washingtonville Middle School Jazz Band on Wednesday, June 14th at the Fireman's Memorial Park from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. in honor of September 11th.
So just so you know about this, Tom, they called up like Thursday last week and they're like, well, we have our insurance certificate. So for the park and we're like, what are you talking about? Apparently, they've been doing it without permits for a while. So it was explained to them that if they're going to use one of our facilities, even if it's a small gathering, that they do have to put in a facilities request form along with the insurance certificate. And that's why this is so last minute. We don't want to say no to the opportunity for kids to learn. At the same token, we don't want people, you know, using our facilities and gathering that we could be liable for.
Right. It actually, I, I, no one, to my knowledge, has ever heard of this and what they do. But apparently, my understanding that there's a history teacher who, whoever comes down there to kind of celebrate their gathering, listening to music, try to give some background on the 9/11 day and teaches whoever there, if the kids have questions or adults. So I'm planning on stopping down there just to see because I've never heard of this and apparently they've been doing it for a number of years. So we'll see.
But now we got them on the right track of how we do things around here.
And their insurance information is there and everything is good. So with that, that form of a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Steve's got the second. Questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Next is a resolution to approve appeal for two new pieces of playground equipment for the memorial park. The Lance Club will be paying for the equipment 100% with the village department of works installing said equipment. Have them form a motion, please? Will I have a second? Thank you. Any conversations? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next is a resolution, approval for the public assembly permit for the Kiwanis Club Washingtonville at the Fireman's Memorial Park for flags for heroes as follows. August 10th, flags will be placed in the park. August 12th, the names of the flags for heroes will be read. And September 9th, the flags will be removed from the park. And this is in a request from the five families involved, obviously in the 9/11. And they would like the flags removed in, you know, memory and thoughts of the firemen. And so the Kiwanis Club will be pulling them out at that particular point in time. So with that, with their motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to accept the abstract to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfers of funds and to pay the warrants. Have motion, please? Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Let's see. That really ends the agenda. We have public comment for anybody? Yeah, old person's here? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see.
The eritreating, please, and repeat after me. I, William Jones.
I, William Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
No, support the constitutions.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Planning board member. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
You have two members on your floor. Malsi, can you put your hand up? And Eddie?
And Eddie. So for public comment again, if anybody has anything. Otherwise, the board is going to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. So if they have a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues, have a second, please? Any questions down there? All in favor?
And I just want the public to know, we're not going to be voting on anything. We're not going to be making any discussion, decisions. We're just going to be talking about personnel. As I said, we have to hire, so we got some resumes to go over.
Pretty good. Thank you very much. Thanks so much.